Large conference room in the middle, if you look in the back up, it would be, I think, the room on the right in the middle was previously used as a weight room by our fire advisors. And it's a large room with two doors and entrances, and it's perfect for dividing to create more separate rooms. So Joel has contacted me and asked that he'd be allowed to hire a contractor and get a divider wall set up. And I told him, I think that's appropriate, as long as they paid to have it removed and have everything patched and painted as if we're new, should that be the commission system, time they move out. We have the opportunity to say, no, leave it. We like it that way. Depends on how we're going to leave it or what we're going to do with that building. So just trying to be good, bland wood for this time of year. So I see.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Travis, second by Shane. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Item two is Nicole Baldwin County Court. Item A is discussion for possible action, approval to hold a special county commission meeting on June 19th, 2020, to approve the canvas of the votes from the June 9th, 2020 primary election.
Thank you, Chairman. Due to changes in the law concerning tabulation of votes during an election, which entail, election results are no longer reported on election night because I'm still processing ballots and receiving ballots up until the week after the election. Seven days after election night, I'm still receiving ballots in the mail, as long as they're postmarked by election day. So I'm allowed up to 10 days after election day to do my canvas. And that falls in between commission meeting weeks. And just because this is a new year with all these changes, I'm asking for the maximum amount of time to prepare my canvas, which means asking you to agree to hold a special commission meeting on Friday, June 19th, to approve the canvas of the vote.
I may possibly be on that date for conference, but they might cancel it because of the Corona. So it's up, my schedule's up in the air, but does everyone else want to be here that day?
If I should be here.
Yeah, I don't think I'm going to have a problem.
It'll be a real short meeting. I'll just go over the election and what happened.
Do you want that special time? I mean, did you want to get a special time?
We could do it. One in the afternoon, is that okay with you guys?
Give me a minute.
Whoops.
Yep, sure.
Okay.
I'll need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Ian.
Second.
Second by Lori, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Okay. We got one more item here, I guess, Nicole, which is B, discussion for possible action, the approval of the annual evaluation of town councils and advisory boards in White Pine County. Should I just do all these?
Yeah, you can do them all together. I'll tell you why you're looking at these. In the standard operations for town councils and advisory boards in White Pine County require advisory boards and town councils to prepare these evaluations for you. And they come to you this time of year because they, they'll tell you the successes and failures of the board over the last year and what they need as far as budgets go for the coming year. So I hope you've had time to review them, and I'm just asking for your approval of them.
Okay. We're going to be approving Ag. 13, the Airport Advisory Board, Gulf Advisory Board, Local Emergency, Local Emergency Planning Committee, Library Board of Trustees, McGill Town Council, Pool Act Public Land Users Advisory Committee, Yerba Town Council, and the Water Advisory Board. I'll look for a motion to approve.
Move. So moved.
Motion by Travis, second. Second by Ian. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Item C, discussion for possible action, the approval of the request for resignation from Desiree Barnson and Maddie Jensen, the Lennoxie Board. They both indicated they would like to be, no longer be a member of that board, and I just look for a motion to approve their resignations.
Move to approve.
Motion by Ian.
Second.
Second by Shane. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Item D is discussion for possible action, the approval of the request for resignation from Shannon Pierce and Bernadette Senna, also from Lennoxie. Same reasons.
Move to approve.
Motion by Ian.
Second.
Second by Travis. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I gotta say something on these. They're, these resignations come-
Please don't.
Don't? All right, but I definitely want to say something about it. Okay, I won't say anything. Thank you for telling me.
You're welcome. Yeah.
I'm reaching for a cup like this.
Okay, we'll just move on. Item C is Department Head, Kristy Rosich, Aquatic Center Director. Item A is discussion for possible action, the approval of the post for the position at McGill Pool Manager for the summer of 2020.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. So I'm here again just to say it's time. So I just need your approval that we can go ahead and start looking for somebody for the McGill Town Manager. All of our previous ones in the past are not interested in continuing. So we're going to be looking for someone fresh.
Okay. I'll need to approve.
John, do you do an exit interview that would help?
Um, we encourage them. We encourage them to do it, whether or not they want to participate. I can't force them to go down.
I know that you can't, but I, you know.
But Tim does conduct an exit interview with everybody, or at least attempts.
Okay. We have a motion by Ian.
Second.
Second by Travis. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None.
And Lori, it kind of comes down to more of the time commitment during the summer because usually they have another job to be off the other time of the year. And summer comes along and people are all for it, but then the time commitment is really, yeah, they don't have summer, so.
Yeah.
Sure.
That is a tough one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Item B is discussion for possible action, the approval to keep the McGill Pool open on the 18th, 19th, and 20th of September, 2020 for a musical event fundraiser put on by Rudy Herndon to raise money for the McGill Township.
So I was approached by Rudy about a month ago, and we've kind of talked about it. I, this isn't something that I would fully encourage, but I wanted to bring it to you guys, let you guys be the deciding factor, because we do want to support McGill as much as possible. And I want to do my part in that. There are some concerning factors. This is after our season has already closed. This is after we've already scheduled with maintenance to have it shut down, winterize, drain. We work with a ranch down the line that the water feeds into their property. He times his stuff around that time period. The water is too cold by then. Usually we don't, by that time of year, people aren't coming to the pool because the water has cooled down so much. They are going to be serving alcohol over at the park, so we would have to monitor that coming in and out. So there's the safety concern. So we would also have to, because we've already lost our summer staff by that time, we would have to shut down the aquatic center for half a day each of those three days to supply staff out there, because we'd have to bring our pool staff out there, not knowing how many people to expect.
Can they just use the park and not the pool?
They can use the park. I mean, they, I know they're planning on using the park. We have nothing to do with the park.
That's what I'm saying.
So they're wanting-
He's like a concert, concert, too.
Yeah.
I think that there's three bands that he's-
He's wanting to have the pool open so that people can be swimming and going over to the park. And so-
Where's, you know where he's going to have the concert? He's not put it, is he putting the concert in the pool area?
In the McGill Park area. So everything's going to be held in the park. They were just hoping to have the pool open so that families can go over there and their kids could be running back and forth and stuff like that, which is a wonderful idea. And I encouraged him to do it and come to me next year at a more appropriate time for that facility, because we want to support and we want this. I mean, this is a great idea he's doing. I think it would really be an amazing thing for us to be part of, and I want to be part of it. But the timing of the year this year is just not quite appropriate.
Wouldn't it be cool, what season?
We close on Memorial Day, Labor Day.
Labor Day.
Yeah, Labor Day.
There's no way he wants to just move it up?
Well, he can't. He tried the, the main attraction.
It's based on their schedule.
It's based on their schedule, but he did say that he was willing to pay for the costs incurred.
He's willing to pay for all the people and for the time that we would be. So it'd really come down to, do we want to close? You know, this is going to affect our maintenance crew, it's going to affect another rancher, and this is going to affect the time up at the aquatic center.
But somebody said that it only takes like four hours to fill, and then I don't-
But then to re-drain it and what, because we already, we have to winterize it, too.
Yeah.
So we can't, once we break it down, we, it's a lot to set back up. It's not, it's not as easy.
What's the risk of just staying open till then? What does that look like?
We won't have staffing for it, and it's just money.
What, I mean, keeping them on, just?
Elizabeth.
Yeah. The thing is, it's about-
We might be down finance director.
Man, the problem with school in session and that usage would be nil. I, I just-
It would be-
Yeah, there's like a whole weekend between.
Oh man, I'll tell you what, I've shoveled a lot of snow on these dates in September in the past years.
If he was hoping that some people would be polar bear people like him and take that those-
Because it's not a hot spring, it's a warm spring. So the average temperature there's between 74 to 77, so.
Which is cold.
It-
Okay.
But I thought I'd leave it up to you guys, because after the discussion I had with him, some other people approached me, and I wanted to leave it on your guys' hands of what you would like me to do.
Approached you in pro con?
Both.
Labor Day, December?
No.
So it's two, two years.
We could talk, I'd rather not elaborate.
We had Shane put in some input from Lori, and Ian, and I really listened to your comments, and I think each one of us have done that. Does anybody have another comment that I could make?
Yeah, I mean, unless, I was just going to say, I'm just trying to think of how to make this work if we could, but maybe not keep it open. Is there serious damage that could happen if we don't have to open it, but if we don't drain it, if we don't go through the whole winterization thing, would that save us time and money to just lock it down until he needs to use it?
No, we couldn't really do that, because we would have to drain it, because the person that's downstream uses it.
Yeah.
So we would have to, or I don't know if Rudy's had conversation with that individual yet.
I don't know. I don't. It'd be, but we'd also, our maintenance crew would also have to rearrange their schedule.
It sounds like it's going to be too much for all of them.
Yeah, I kind of tend to think it sounds too much. I don't know, maybe we just table this and encourage Rudy to get with said rancher and get with Bill Callarwood and talk through this a little bit before we just turn it down. And see if, if, if they can make it work, then, you know, that would maybe.
See what he has to say. And I, I think he was supposed to come, I'm not 100% sure, to the liquor board, because we opened that up, because he's on the agenda.
Questions, Ann.
Or maybe I won't. So, do you want to go ahead and maybe table this until next time? And maybe he can, we can contact him, or I can contact you, or Kristy can contact him and have him here, see if he's available for questions.
Yeah, if Kristy can just reach back out to him to get him on, have him come the next agenda. And I think we all support this at a different time next-
When you want him to accommodate the financial loss of the aquatic center, too. We will have to shut down that. Those three days that we would have to shut down for over half a day.
Yeah.
I think that he would have to look at, definitely if he's committing, you know, to go ahead and pay for costs incurred, I think we, he certainly needs to be aware of what that amount might entail.
Yeah, and loss of revenue up there is, got to be considered, I think.
Yeah.
That's, yeah, we can't take that, yeah.
It sounds like a great idea.
Yeah.
But, you know, the devil will be in the details for sure.
Okay, I'll look for a motion to table this item.
Move to table.
Second.
Motion by Travis and a second by Shane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Well, you guys are fast today. You guys sound really slow.
Lot of coffee today.
Item B is discussion for possible action, the approval to give direction to explore sales tax increase.
You missed.
I have one more.
I'm sorry. Item C, discussion only. It's about pricing and membership of the aquatic center.
So Elizabeth, you can chime in whenever you want. Recently, we had AARP kind of changed their program for the seniors, and it's kind of led to us looking at all of our pricing in comparison to facilities in our state that are our size of population and our size of facility. And Elizabeth and I have kind of found some back ideas, because it's been requested to us that, and Richard and I've talked a little bit about this, trying to come up something that can accommodate the seniors. And, but that would, Elizabeth, it would kind of lower the cost significantly to accommodate what they were already paying, because we were getting subsidized from AARP, the difference of the cost, where we're not getting that anymore. And it's a significant amount. It's roughly about $13 a month per person.
Wow.
Would it increase the amount of people using it, do you think?
I don't foresee.
Okay.
Well, it's going to be my question, $13 a month per person, but how many people have been taking advantage of that? How much income have we realized? So 20 people a month?
And one of the things you have to remember that I discussed with you during the budget on the aquatic center is that we are having a downward trend in our program revenues. And I asked Kristy to go ahead and reach out to other pools and look at what their pricing structures are and what they're, they charge. And we're kind of on the low end of things, and we have a much more complicated structure. It'd be nice if we could simplify and maybe look at-
I mean, we down our options instead of creating more, it would be.
Yes.
Yeah, that might ease the water pretty good. No pun intended, sorry. Would you want to maybe draft up what you think you want to do in terms of consolidating and simplifying?
We can work together on that. We have that comparables.
I'm all for that. I mean, simplify, this is, it's sales 101, people need options.
Right.
If you could include in that pack, when we review it, the price structures from the other facilities that you're analyzing.
I think I put it in your backup notes.
It's in here.
Everyone else.
Gotta scroll down a bit.
I didn't scroll down far enough. I was, I just went through our list.
Do you think you would lose participants if you stayed status quo, or?
We haven't so far.
I'm more than happy to people that use it.
Um, no. Our individual use has actually increased, but it's our, more of our groups that were coming from different organizations that were bringing groups to us, that's just decreased. But our individual use has actually increased. And with these changes that have come in the past few months, we haven't lost anyone that was upset about it.
Okay. This is a discussion item. I think that you've given us some good dialogue. If we get with Elizabeth, kind of get them listing and come back to us, and we can take an action on it, maybe on the 26th, or even wait a month, invitation a month. It's not likely we have to do it right away.
We were hoping that, well, I was hoping to have the price changes when we go from winter to summer. That way it's kind of like right off the bat with our new pamphlets and everything.
So that'd be made?
Yes.
Yeah, come back to us in about April.
All right, perfect. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Kristy.
Okay, what we're going to do right now, because Lori, you're okay to stick around, right? Because I want to take a quick break, and then I'm going to go back into the 10:30 item. We're really moving along well. And we'll just take a quick break, because we haven't had, we'll come back with the fire commission at 10:30, and then we'll proceed with the other meeting. Is that okay with everybody?
Sure.
Okay, so take a quick break. We'll come here, and we're going to go back to, to page three. It's the 10:30 AM fire commission meeting. So at this time, I'll recess the regular county commission meeting. Page six, we're going to go to item two. It is Lori Romero, Library Director, Senior Program Administrator. It's discussion for possible action, the approval to accept the Great Basin Heritage Area Partnership Grant, any amount of $1,500 to be used towards the newspaper preservation online project. There is a dollar-for-dollar match being covered by the director's salary.
Okay. If you recall right, a few months back, we got some liberal funding to start the digital format of the SPA fund. And that funding gave us about 20 years to put on. With the additional 1,500 from the Great Basin Heritage Area Partnership Grant, we can add another 10 years onto that, so we will have about 30 years on additional format.
Okay. Anybody got a question on that? If not, I'll look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Travis?
Motion by Ian, I'll second.
Ian, motion by Ian, second by Travis. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Item B is discussion for possible action, the approval to give direction to explore a sales tax increase for the White Pine Nutrition Program per NRS 377A.02, or a ballot question to designate a portion of the current property tax rate directed towards, to the program. So-
Okay, so this kind of goes back to 2005 when taxation came in, and I was put over that program. I was told that there was a couple ways that we had to do something to make that program more stable. Would I just hand it out to you? Do you want one, George?
You have one. Thank you.
Is funding cost just for meals from October 1st through the end of February? The average cost of a meal over there, we had to do a survey of Division for Aging for a year. They included labor, utilities, everything to figure out what the average cost of a meal was. And ours was $9.17. So you take how many meals were served, and then Division for Aging did increase by a dollar, their reimbursement per meal, this last, the end of this last fiscal year. And then we have the suggested donation of $3. We cannot monitor who pays, who doesn't pay, and blame either some seniors that just can't afford to pay. So if you take what that cost of those meals are, what we get reimbursed, what we've collected in program income for those five months, you can see we're not covering the cost with those two items. So as once again, we go back to 2005 when taxation came in, we have to find a way to bring in additional revenue to keep that program whole. So in your backup documentation I gave you, and once again, I took some slides from, borrowed some slides from Elizabeth's presentation that was done a couple years ago, per NRS 377A.0230, about collecting a sales tax for a few select entities in which Senior Center is one that qualifies. And then back in, once again, 2006, we did the ballot question with the property taxes. This board, that expired, but this board has been gracious enough to continue to honor that. My concern is, as years go on, elections change, people change, that this board may not be as senior-friendly and supportive. And so I want to find a way to ensure that this program continues to get the funding it needs to continue. Because otherwise, what will happen is our resources are going to go down as the population goes up, and we're going to have to create waiting lists. And that means some people are going to serve, some people aren't, and it's going to depend on different criteria. And I really don't want to have to make that determination. Like I say, right now, we're pretty much stretched. And we have, like I say, 65 on homebound, we're averaging 55 at the center. And so somehow I need that insurance that that program's going to have what it needs. And it's not saying in the future, say, the lines go down, net proceeds go down, that we may still not have to make some adjustments. But that's where we keep trying to build that ending funding, ending balance a little bit every year. So we have a little bit of something to fall back on, too. Plus, you know, you've got vehicles that need replaced in the future and stuff like that. So I'm just throwing these out as two options, that once again, were thrown at me during taxation time. We know it's election year, so this is the time to address one of those options, if that's where we want to go.
I think, you know, and I, again, I, I go there, I see it. Because if we put this on the ballot, and the commission can look at it, and let the people vote on all tax initiatives, it's a very important program, don't get me wrong. And I believe that no matter, my own heart, I think that no matter who sits on this board, whenever it is, the Senior Center will always get additional funding. We're doing fine budget-wise here in a county without trying to throw tax. But your, your concern is that maybe it's a new board, and they wouldn't have the support that probably this board gives. I can understand that. When you go to the ballot question, and the citizens of the community look, and they decide, our aging population, the boomers are hitting it, everybody knows that, but to throw a tax out there on the citizens as a board would probably not be a real good idea. But if you allow the citizens the opportunity, it's up to you to put this on and get the signatures to get it allowed to be put on. I got no problem with that. But I think, by my own heart, down the road, there'll always be an appetite to keep that center, no matter what, going, if we have to redo somewhere else. But taxes are taxes, no matter how you look at it. But to ask the public to go out and, and ask, put it on the ballot, and whatever the citizens vote for, that's what they vote for. That, to me, that's what I'd like to see. I mean, if that's your, if that's the direction we want to go, I understand, I think we all understand the numbers, the numbers are right in front of us. The population, the amount of meals you're serving, the place is packed every day. There's hardly a seat in that, in that room. But it costs money to operate. But your, your question here is a ballot question, which I, I think would be okay with me. I mean, it's up to you. I don't know, what, how do you feel, Ian?
So I, I don't support a tax or putting it on the ballot. And me and Ian had conversations with Lori, but I think what I would recommend we do to give her assurance is we pass an ordinance that makes it so that funding is always secured. And then if the board ever wants to undo it in the future, to undo that ordinance, there has to be public comment. Plenty of opportunity to do that. No board is going to tell a roomful of seniors, no. I mean, I just don't see where that happens. I mean, that's the reason for public comment is, is, is to get the public's input. So I, I suggest if Lori is concerned about that, that she works with the DA's office to get an ordinance, or whatever we have to do to memorialize what we do now. And then the other option is to increase the suggested donation. My grandma for years was on homebound meals, and she religiously paid her $3, and she would have paid five or six. She just loves having someone come by the house every day and drop her meal off. So I mean, I think a combination of those two things, you know, I think we, we can sustain this. And the reason I'm against the tax is, I mean, you know, you're a person, you work hard your life and save for retirement, and then, you know, just because somebody did it, and now you have to support them, which I know there's, that's not a black and white issue. There are those instances where our underprivileged seniors absolutely do need to be supported. But, I mean, we just keep pushing taxes, you know, we're all going to need to be supported by the government, in my opinion. So I don't, the tax is dead with me, but I just support these other avenues to fix this and ease Lori's concerns. And I fully support those other options.
Yeah, just, just running quick spitball numbers. It looks like about 80% are paying when they're meeting at the, at the building, and about 60% are paying on the homebound. If you bumped it up from $3 to $5, that'd bring an extra 15 grand in, just across the board. That's round, that's round numbers, probably some, some wiggle room there. But more to the point, I'm with Travis on, if we just pass an ordinance saying this, the Senior Center will be supported, period. Because what she's looking for, what the pressure she's getting is, they want to see some stability in their funding, which is understandable. And so I would, I'd be fine just saying, hey, we're going to make sure that they're funded and force some heartless board 30 years from now to have to, so steer down everybody in the way to repeal that.
I mean, they should be a priority, you know, before our Parks and Recreation seniors that absolutely, absolutely come before them, that, you know, which comes to show on funding.
Yep. Lori or Shane has got something you want to add to? I think-
I would agree with that completely. I, I think this is a very high priority, and, and whatever ordinance or wording we have to put in to, to ensure that stability, I'm, I'm fine with supporting that.
Lori?
I'm always supporting the Senior Center.
I think this board is 100%.
This board's been good about it, and-
And always will, and our, and the way we budget, we're shape, Elizabeth, we're in good shape. If we ever got into crunch time, a board can, well, hopefully we can get a resolution, that a board can always have the money to support the Senior Center to make sure it always stays in operation.
Well, I think we'd want to look at how, how that's worded. I mean, because if you, I've, based on what the services are now, if they're not being provided with expanded services, blah, blah, blah. There are different ways to look at the support of the Senior Center. But yeah, I think that that is something I could work with the district attorney's office on, getting an ordinance that says, you know, this is something that's going to be an ongoing, permanent- this is something that's going to be an ongoing, permanent function of the county.
They need, I mean, that was a, this board knows and Travis up firsthand with.